All right, we're at the top of the hour. I call this may have school district five board of trustees ordered. Mark, will you lead us in the plug?
Let's lead us to the flag of the United States of America and the free republic for which it stands. One nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So I'm guessing tonight we'll have a strong online presence. So I think in the past, one thing that has been abundantly clear is that they can't hear us. We're muffled with the mask, so make sure if we can speak loud that everyone can hear us. Public comment. This is time for comment on public matters that are not on the agenda. Members of the audience are encouraged to briefly address the trustees on any issue that are not on the agenda in the center jurisdictions. Would anyone like to address the board of trustees at this time? Okay, no one online has registered yet, so. First item of old business, Peterson water testing. Micah?
Yeah, so our district continues to test the water in all of our schools. And we had some updates. Peterson was recently tested and there's some good news and there's some bad news. And I think we're going to see that across our school sites. We have, kind of like we scroll down to the result. So on the district website, I actually do a little bit more formatting on these and identify with green kind of being good, yellow is in the middle and red is bad. And the bin one column is one where we have to replace and or disconnect completely that fixture. The ones in the middle column in bin two where it says flushing program, replace or filter, which is essentially what we've done at Hedges School. We'll continue to do that work at our other sites where there are those recommendations. For some of them, it just means that to have safer water, really what we need to do is flush or run the water for a couple of minutes before we would take a drink. But any of our fixtures where we're capable of putting a filter on, we will continue to do that and we'll continue to keep our community and board updated on those. So as results come in, we'll just keep sharing them.
Micah, what's this costing per test and what's this costing for what they've replaced in the fixture?
So right now it's $15 per test on each fixture. So roughly $1,000 to $1,500 per school depending on the size and the number of fixtures that they're testing. So if you have a sink with a drinking fountain, that's two fixtures. You have the faucet and you have the drinking fountain that they're testing. So, and the good news is, is there is some grant money available from the Department of Environmental Quality with some assistance on that, so they've been able to help pay for some of that testing. Some of our sites, we continue to retest, and so those are additional. So for example, at Hedges, we installed $50 filters on each one of the faucets. And they're realistically the highest quality we could get specifically for removing lead. And they're good for about 100 gallons and then you have to replace the filter. There's little indicator lights on those. And so it's gonna, it'll end up costing the district some money over the long term, but also the health of our students and safe drinking water is the priority.
Other, I just, so I know the DEQ came out with some new guidelines. Before, the guidelines were a little bit different, is that true?
They were, so the rule changed. And it went from 15 parts per billion as a safe level. And you didn't have to take any action for anything, 15 parts to zero. But the DEQ also acknowledges that there's no safe level of lead in water. What we really want to see is zero across all of our plumbing fixtures. The new rule is five parts per billion or greater. There has to be some remediation done to satisfy the rule.
And do we have any other schools to do this summer?
Yes, we still have Elrod and, you know, lose track here, Elrod and Edgerton. And Peterson, no, Peterson just did. So yeah, so we're pretty much doing all of our elementary schools this year. And we'll do KM, well, KMS is on the list to do this year as well. And Tina, who has been doing the testing, has said, based on the test results from the last time she did the testing, expect that we're going to have some challenges at KMS to address. And also, just one other piece of information, once the filter goes in place, they actually do have to come back and retest all those sites. And then we'll have new information. All of this information is on our district website and it's also on the DEQ's website. So we're rolling.
Okay, more to come.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Micah? Thank you. New business, school updates to the board. And we have a schedule, I believe.
There we go. So one of the things, and especially for our new board members, we strongly encourage you to get out to our schools and see what's going on and have some interaction with the administration and staff and students. And we have put together a schedule for those site visits. And we will make sure that we share that with you and so, and put it on the calendar and then you all.
Site visits are for them talking to us here at the board meeting.
Oh, yes, it is. I'm sorry. So there's two parts. One is going out and visiting the schools. The other is the schools actually come and present to us and share what's going on within their buildings. The elementary typically has student presenters and staff that do that. And so this will be the updated schedule for this year.
So I actually didn't include the other one because I didn't want to confuse anyone. So those dates for going to the schools for the class visitations are on your board's calendar. The calendar, they're on.
And Jen, I see you first up. I know last year you did the recess directions about how to play games and where to do. I would love to hear more about that. Thank you. Any other questions about the schedule? Traffic Education Center.
Later on in the agenda, you will be asked to vote on a lease for a new car. And I thought that it would be important to give you a little background on our traffic education program before coming to you to ask for approval for a lease on a car. This is just a one-page quick summary of the district traffic education program. We are calling it the Traffic Education Center. We have two new directors this school year that you voted on at the last meeting. If a student or parent wants to register for traffic education, right now the hours are listed on the screen. You do a Monday registration and then they go over to the old laser building behind the Car Wars and the Taco Restaurant to do that. The current cost is $270 for the course and the driving. And the district has held that price for many, many years. We have been able to keep it at that price and not increase it to take care of our students and our families. We are able to serve 480 students a year. And we have 20 sessions, class size is 24. Currently, we have 17 instructors. Our goal is to build the capacity of the program, but it will require us to have additional instructors. Traffic education in Montana is highly controlled by the Office of Public Instruction. The instructors have to be certified. It's an endorsement on your teaching certificate. And it requires taking classes. And last summer, they were canceled. So that kind of put us off a year as far as recruiting new instructors. But that is one of our goals this year. Right now, we have six cars in our inventory. You will be voting on a new car lease. And then just a heads up, there's another one that we are hoping to replace in the future. So you may see that on your agenda sometime this school year. We are COVID compliant. The directors of the traffic ed program were immediately on that. Full Rick Hagley that runs the maintenance department has really taken on the lead in making sure that folks have the necessary supplies. He was all over providing the necessary sanitation supplies. Our folks that are in the cars when they're driving are required to wear masks. And it's not an option. And this was long, this was from the get-go, long before the governor weighed in or anything like that. The traffic ed budget is a special budget that Gwen oversees for us. And right now, the balance is certainly a healthy balance. Just to give you a future look at where we're headed with the program, we've set a lofty goal this year. And that is, in very simple terms, to rebrand the program. And I listed some of the things that we are focusing on. Customer service, we feel that we can do a lot of improvement in the area of customer service, taking a little bit better care of our parents and students. We are also, as part of that customer service component, looking at computerized registration so that our parents can register online, pay the fees online, and they don't have to make a trek into an office to do this. Instructor recruitment, I mentioned, and just professional development and just kind of moving the whole program to the next generation of traffic ed. Are there any questions about our program?
Kelly, is there enough space for new students? The reason I bring that up, I went through this week and got my youngest daughter registered. She'll be doing this class in May.
Yeah, and I was shaking my head. You're lucky that you've got a spot. I mean, we are down to very few spots left for this whole entire school year. So the need is out there. And what is holding us up is we do not have certified instructors. And if we had that, we would be going in a whole different direction. More classes sooner, you don't have to wait as long. But right now, we have to follow the rules and we just need to get some more instructors on board.
Other questions?
Lance, can I just comment on what Kelly was talking about in regards to the car? So we did have a leased vehicle that was involved in an accident. And that's what we're asking to replace tonight, later on in the agenda. So just want to make that clear. We're not adding cars this time. Eventually, we have a plan to add another one, but tonight it's a replacement of one we.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. So what happens if a car is wrecked and so many of the students might have been involved? Does that increase our rates? Insurance rate?
Well, their leased vehicle, so I, he did not see any increase based on this accident. I imagine in the future, we might, but. And actually, you know, I've been here nine years. We had a little winter bender bender, but this was the first time we've ever done it. And it actually was not with students at all. So that's good news. And we got everything taken care of, but yeah, it's something that we really don't like to see happen.
Gwen, do you have a sense of how many miles per year we put on those cars?
Our leases are three-year leases and we typically turn them back because we want kids driving and the most current, probably also mobile, only driving the most. But it's for teaching, you know, opportunities, we want them to be driving something fairly current. But I, off the top of my head, I can't really think about the mileage. We never exceed the miles that the lease allows. But we're in good shape there, but I don't recall.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Will?
At $270, a student, does this make it a self-funding program? Or do we have to throw in extra money?
No, it's funded itself. We spend, the program costs about $250,000 on the year. And we pretty much collect that between the fees for the students. And the state also subsidizes for each, the state pays $144 for each student that completes the course. So that's one source of revenue and the other source is the fees that we collect from students anytime they're stuck.
Thank you. Remote Education Center.
I did, was it only the March session that got canceled because of COVID?
The March and April session.
March and April. Was it, was that one session, March through April?
I'm sorry.
Was March, April one session or was that two sessions?
It was a couple of different sessions.
So like two sessions got pushed, okay.
And we rescheduled and added some driving times on there to get those students caught up.
Okay. The Remote Education Center.
I would like to give the board an update on where we are with our remote learning opportunity for students and parents. The timeline is on the board. Let me make it a little bit bigger here. It's been a process. And we are right in here where tomorrow, we will meet with the teachers that are in that cadre that are teaching in the Remote Education Center. They will spend time prepping. And the instruction starts on Tuesday, September 8th. The students that are in the Remote Education Center program will make arrangements. The teachers will actually reach out and make arrangements with their students to pick up their materials, textbooks, home books, whatever is needed for the course. And they will do that before September 11th. So they can have that window between September 8th and 11th to get all that done. And we have a system in place that will work us through that so that our students have what they need to successfully do the course. To give you a few numbers, and these numbers are of Saturday. On the elementary side, we have 246 students enrolled in the REC program. Middle school has 169. The middle school, we are offering core subjects, math, English, social studies, and science. And we have some courses in there that are differentiated. So there's a couple of different math courses, a couple of different English depending on the needs of the, when the student's registered. High school, we have 315 students. At the high school level, we have 42 courses that are currently sitting on the master schedule. We have 24 high school teachers teaching at least one section. Some of our high school teachers are 100% remote. And some of them are like 90% teaching at a campus school, on campus. And then they're picking up one period remotely. We needed to be very creative on the master schedule to make sure that we kept our class size low in those courses. And so we were able to put some email out. And we, as I sit here today, we have all our positions filled, K through 12. The total of 730 students. We do have IEP students and 504 students. The District Director of Special Education, Sarah Poehl, has done a wonderful job with her plan. She's kept in contact, communication with OPI on what the regulations are for remote learning and serving our IEP and 504 students. And she's going to be at the workshop tomorrow with our remote education teachers and give them the latest procedure and protocols on how to support those students. When everything is said and done, the 730 students are about 12% of our student population, which is somewhat lower than some of our other double A counterparts. It's a little bit all across the board, but 12% is, that's a good number. And I calculated it using what the current overall enrollment was on Saturday. Mike and I, a couple of days ago, looked at the high school number of 730 and we thought, well, wouldn't it be interesting if we said, that's just a freestanding independent high school. Where does it fit in the enrollment class rank of all these schools in the state of Montana? I got on the Montana High School Association website and they have the enrollment of all the high schools in the state in order of big to small. And there we were. If the REC high school program was a freestanding school, it would be the 36th largest high school in the state. There are 145 high schools smaller than our program. So we have a nice, robust high school program that is larger than a lot of the high schools in the state.
Kelly, question about accreditation. I know there's certain standards for student to teacher ratio. And when I look at the elementary, we're looking at 30, 1 to 30 ratio.
And I actually, Lance, I have some numbers on that. And we are over some class sizes and we are still working on those. Our goal, when we went into this, was twofold. One is, is that we put a certified teacher in every position. And that was important to us. And the second goal was, is we met class size requirements. Met or were under the class size requirement. And there's an interesting, in this 22.8 certified FTE, we actually, 16, roughly 16 FTE of that is new FTE. It's folks that we have hired to come in. And they aren't necessarily teaching in the Remote Education Center. Many of them are actually teaching on campus. And another teacher that's a veteran KPS teacher is now teaching in the Remote Education Center. And we went that way because our veteran teacher knows the curriculum, knows the school system, and they can make a transition much easier into a remote than having a brand-new person maybe that has moved here out of state and they are trying to get this figured out. So, but we do have some new teachers that are in the Remote Education Center. But we've hired a lot of staffing. That staffing has been paid for out of those budgets that came out of either the federal or the state, the COVID budgets.
And in particular, like the elementary, because it's easier to wrap my mind around that. So 246 students are taken kind of out of the six elementary schools. Is it noticeable within the elementary schools or the class size is still large?
The class sizes at the elementary level are actually, and this is of Saturday. So net, so I run, I have some formulas and I run data, input data, and then let the computer run the numbers. And so I have just net seats available. And this is asked to the, the Remote Education Center students have been pulled off the roster. For example, at Edgerton, I have 64 seats available in Edgerton. And it's spread out, Vance, over the grade levels. Rankin, there's 44, Peterson, 62, Hedges, 66, Russell, 84, and Elrod, 65. So in theory, after the remote students have, there's, there is a reduced class size that you'll see in the, in the buildings.
Other questions for Kelly?
You'll see the split, this was in your packet.
You had said at the, I'll make sure I talk, you had said at the last meeting that the teachers that had requested to be fully online had all found spots there. Does that still hold true? Okay, great.
Good. And in tomorrow's meeting, we'll do the elementary in the morning and then the high school, middle school in the afternoon. It's a two-hour session. We have five objectives for that workshop. And we will talk all the way from what the protocols are, what the student-parent-teacher expectations are, to nuts and bolts, next steps. I mean, we are, we're going to cover a lot of ground so that these teachers can get up and running in a timely manner. So I'm very excited about what we've done. And I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge a group. There's been a tremendous effort behind the scenes from the people in the building to accomplish this. When you look at the high school master schedule alone, there are literally thousands and thousands and thousands of input. And the leadership, administrative leadership, working in conjunction with those high school counselors, they literally, they had their master schedule flipped on its side and they had to rebuild it, get it standing up again. And then they had to create a remote education center. And my hats off, Brad Holloway on the Flathead side, Alan Stanfield on the Glacier side, two outstanding administrators that have just, they've been at the table round the clock making this happen. So I'd like, Brad, if you could raise your hand, same thing with Alan back there. It's good, it's really, really been a collaborative effort with a lot of people. Any other questions, first block?
I don't know if you said this, but at what point will students, will we be able to tell students who their teachers will be or what their schedules will look like?
That will happen with the teacher reaching out to the student. And that will happen the week prior to September 8th. They, that Thursday and Friday, if I can remember off the top of my head, the schedule. I have two set days in there that they're required to reach out. It actually, it's that Monday, Tuesday, I'm sorry. It's that Monday, Tuesday that the expectation is that they reach out to the students, make personal contact so that that next week when the student is onboard on that Tuesday, that they're good to go. The other thing that we are expecting is that a teacher actually meets them in real life, in person, has a personal meet and greet just once, right at the very beginning, to have a semester course. To have a semester course, especially for our younger kids, that's real tough when they haven't actually met their teacher. And we will practice social distancing, we will follow all our protocols, but there needs, we think it's important to have an outreach.
So in the middle school and the high school, will that be with every teacher? Or will one teacher be teaching multiple classes for a student? Or students will still have many teachers for the different classes?
Students will have many teachers.
And will they meet all of them or they'll have like a home-based teacher that they'll meet?
They will have to meet all of them.
All of them, okay.
And what's also, Ursula, is one of the teachers might be a home-based teacher from Flathead. So say, for example, that one chemistry teacher is a chemistry teacher here at Flathead, but there's going to be Glacier students that are in that course.
Right.
So the teacher stays at the home base, but the students in the class are considered remote education center students. So they, they are supported by the teacher.
Okay, great.
Can I just make one comment? Just please. I just, you know, to put some, to put the visual on this, in the last two weeks, Kelly has literally created a K-12 online school for 730 students with the help of our administration, with the help of our teachers, and an incredible undertaking under any circumstances. And to do it in a short turnaround time, I know there was some, some heartburn with parents around, you know, why do we have to choose so soon? And, and part of it is though, because there's so many parts and pieces that go into this. And we want to be able to support our students as best we can. She has created, she sent out an email yesterday with lots of information, lots of frequently asked questions. That is available on our website as well. Would encourage anybody who wants more information to go there, but just a huge debt of gratitude to Kelly for, for taking that on with everything else. So it was very appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
You're welcome. I'm actually more nervous about running the technology in this meeting than I am setting up the record. It's all a perspective. I'm so nervous.
Our school activity guidelines and procedures.
Yes, so this is in your packet as well, and this is for information. And, and today we have almost all of our, our K-12 administrators. And, and activities is a, is a significant part of what we do. There is a lot to education in the classroom. There's a lot of education associated with activities. And I'm not just talking sports, I'm talking our music programs, I'm talking our after-school programs and clubs and things that we do to help support students grow and, and find connection in school. And activities has been a big conversation across the country and as well in our state. And we have had countless meetings with county health departments and the Montana High School Association, which is the organizing body that oversees activities in Montana. And we've, there, there have been some, some challenges with it. You know, questions about, do we just cancel our seasons altogether and, and not have activities? Do we flip our seasons and, and try and run track after school is out? Do we cancel sporting events? Do we, the, the list just goes on and on. And part of what compounds this is schools are, from, based on what the governor has said, schools don't necessarily fit all the guidelines that were put out there. And relative to things like group size of 50, which has been a really big bone of contention within our state, especially in our large double A schools. Because, for example, if you could not have a group size of greater than 50 outdoor on a practice field, we would not be able to have soccer practice and football practice and cross-country and all these other things going on with our students. And, and it's just one more way that we support them. And so through lots of conversations, and I was certainly part of them, and Mark and Bryce were, were definitely far more involved in those conversations, they put together plans that, and especially valley-wide, that met with, within the guidelines of what the Montana High School Association said, what the governor has said, and what our county health department has said. And that information is all in the packet and you will find that there, you know, here's what's going to happen on transportation, here's what's going to happen in locker rooms, here's what's going to happen with water bottles. We aren't sharing them anymore. Go figure. And so all of those things are in there, but I think what, the one thing that we were able to come away with from within our county was the ability to have fans, to a degree. Similar to graduation, what they have said is that we can have two fans per suited student. So if there were 60 football players suited up, we could have 120 fans. That is what they were comfortable with. There are other counties where they're not allowing fans at all. And so we're really fortunate to be able to have that. And it creates some of the same challenges we had around graduation time. Families that come, or students that come from split homes with a, with a mom and a stepdad and a, and a stepmom and dad and, you know, who gets to do that? And again, that wasn't our decision as a, as a district, that was left up to the county. We advocated, you know, we obviously have room in our stadium to spread out, but it also becomes a management issue because we have to enforce it. And if we're not in compliance, if our fans are not in compliance, if our students are not in compliance, they get shut down. And again, we come back to that goal. We want to open, we want to try and resume as much as we can with our, with our students, but we have to follow the rules. Mark or Bryce, do either one of you want to add anything more to what I said?
You know, I think, you know, Tamalee in the, in the meeting was really good. I mean, her, you know, two, I guess her two major things were, I want kids to participate and I'm going to catch a lot of flak because I'm going to give you two, two people to watch and I want them to be their parent. And I mean, she was, I thought she was fair. I think she also opened it up for a lot of other people in the state to have spectators at double A levels. And if she hadn't, I don't know if they would have. Because really great balls and mute balls are her. So they both can do it together. So, you know, I, I thought it was a very good meeting with her and I thought, good about the process and just how we have progressed.
What I'm glad about the process and hats off to Tamalee is that we will review the guidelines every full week. And as you guys know, if you're changing, we'll have to, we'll have to, we'll have to, we will meet with her every full week.
Hey, Mark, can we get you to come up and talk in the microphone? And can we get a microphone, please? Is there a microphone at the podium?
There's one right here. You can pick it up, yeah. There you go, Mark.
All right. Thank you. I don't have a lot to say, but.
Now that you've got the microphone.
The first time you've ever been asked to get a microphone.
Tamalee has been wonderful, but the process is constantly evolving. We will meet with Tamalee about every four weeks to review the guidelines, to see where we're at. Who knows? Hopefully those numbers, spectators can increase as we move through our season and if things are going well. Right now, we're allowing cheerleaders, the band is not allowed. However, that'll be something that we will work towards with Tamalee for homecoming to let the band come in. One of our concerns was, you let the band come in, then you got to let another 100 and, well, 240 more spectators because there's 120 kids in the band. So just managing numbers is our challenge. So far, our parents have been wonderful, they've been flexible, there's an understanding, our coaches have been as well. And, you know, I think both Bryce and myself, we've worked to say that our goal is to be the best at navigating through COVID. And a lot of that is not just stringent requirements, it's going to be navigating. If a team gets someone with COVID or whatever it is, how are we going to do it? We're going to be flexible, we're going to, we're going to work through the process and be okay.
Mark, a couple of questions. The first, are visiting teams, are they also allowed to have spectators?
They are not. No spectators from visiting teams at this time. And that's, that's pretty much every double A out there is following those guidelines as well.
And how's the day-to-day practices been with football? I see volleyball here and I was, I was kind of in the COVID climate and how are we, how are the kids responding to what they're supposed to be doing?
They've been good, you know, for instance, we have purchased, with COVID dollars, we've purchased buffs for our student athletes. Like when an athlete gets off the football field or the soccer field or football field, they've got to put a mask on right away. Once they stop breathing hard, they've got to have a mask on. Our volleyball players and our soccer players, they've been working with those buffs at practice, pulling them up when they, when the coach brings them in, they'll pull them up. So it's, the process has been evolutionary, I guess, it's an evolution. Hand sanitizer, you know, trying to squirt the balls and so forth, cleaning those, we probably need to be better and we're working through that. Volleyball, when you've got 50 volleyballs in a gym, keeping those all clean. One of the big things we're just emphasizing is clean hands when you come in and, and mitigating some of those challenges. Bryce, anything to add?
No, I think, you know, the kids are just, they want to be here, so they, surprisingly, sometimes they, you know, they will make sure they're following their protocols and they'll jump in and follow each other out on a little bit because they, they want to be here, they don't want to have, you know, something happen where they can't. So a lot of times you see the kids are policing each other too.
Scott? Lance, I got a to mend them too. I participated in the, I rep the-
Or scrimmage, yes.
The scrimmage for the soccer team and the kids were really good about wearing their buffs and when they were on the sideline, when they were talking with the coaches. Coaches had theirs up, players had theirs up when they were together. It seems like they're getting into it really well and, and accepting it and, and doing well with it, so it was good, Steve. Ursula?
So question, I thought I had read something, if the, if Flathead and Glacier play each other, do they both get to have spectators?
We do, yep. And that's throughout the valley. When we have some varsity contests, we go to Columbia Falls, our parents can go there and vice versa.
Okay.
Yes.
Comment, which is kind of along the same lines, I do want to say that I am really thankful. Everything I read, it seems like we are trying and kind of succeeding as best we can to do it all. I think it's really fantastic that we are, you know, trying to find that middle ground where we can still have these activities as safely as we can. And it, every time I read more things, it really feels like that is what's happening. So that's great. And then question, how in line is this with other double A schools? And are, are they, are there going to be any matches with other schools or yes?
Yes, yes, we'll be playing other double A schools. And that's one thing we stress with our parents is that every week is going to be a little bit of an adventure. We're going to get a new set of guidelines on what we can do and what we can't do. Like last week, we got some guidelines that came to us as ADs saying, you can't shower after a football contest. And I said, that's ridiculous. We've got gallons of hand sanitizer, we want everyone clean and we're not going to shower. So we're still working through that challenge. One other challenge, one other challenge we're working through is, they said you've got to bring your volleyball teams out of the gym after they're done playing. So it sounds great in theory, but when you've traveled 200 miles to a location, your kids are going to sit on a bus or they're going to sit on the steps in an apartment complex and they're not going to social distance and it's going to be a mess. We said, why can't they just stay in the gym? And some of those schools have said, oh yeah, that makes sense. You know, we ask our, our folks to use a little bit of common sense and we're finding that through time and as we wrestle through it, there, there is some common sense.
Diane?
Oh, the question, what about the other spectators that want to be able to see this? What kind of access are they going to hopefully have?
Be better. So we have the National Federation Network, the Montana Double A Network. We're a part of that with what we call our Pixelot Systems. Our Pixelot Systems are at our stadium down at Legend's. And then we also have one in our gym. And we're working on getting one at our soccer fields and then also where we could use that at our freshman football game at Glacier High. So in order to get that, in order to receive that streaming, those streaming rights, it's $75 per year to do that. And it's a good value, so that's an alternative for some of the folks out there. So we're working through some of those challenges. Our IP department, they've been great, Jamie Swifty has been wonderful, getting us, helping us get ready and jar us for Saturday. We have a contest versus Hellgate at Glacier and we're hoping that we can stream it through the system and, and have everything working correctly.
Mark, you guys canceled non-conference, is that correct?
We did. We canceled non-conference for football and volleyball primarily. The least impacted season was, was soccer because every game is a conference game. So didn't impact that a whole, whole lot. But football, we dropped two games, volleyball, two tournaments, and another non-con, a couple other non-conference games. Golf has been impacted. Golf is going to one-day meets now until the postseason, whereas usually we're two-day meets all the time. Cross-country, poor Bryce, Bryce can probably speak to this more than I can. Bryce is going to run the state cross-country meet and cross-country is one of the most stringent of rules. Generally, you know, races have 150 people at the starting line. The limits now are at 28. So as an AD and Bryce in particular, he gets in great joy with trying to figure that out.
But you're, you're going to help though, right?
Open them out, sharing them off. But Bryce has been really working hard with that to figure that out and how it might look and, and has really asked some great questions in the Montana High School Association and, and a lot of home meets for cross-country and very small meets. Anything else to add, Bryce, that I have not touched on?
You know, just cross-country is a challenge just because, you know, they, we changed all schedules because what we typically do is invitational. And in this case, those were all taken away. That was one of the things they took away. So really, we rebuilt our entire cross-country schedule. And we, how we did that is, all the double As really are prepared to do that because we all host those. And so we took two instead of one and then Fute did one, Mizzou was doing two, Holland is doing one. And we're keeping that also in the conference, but they're much smaller. You know, the Montana High School Association didn't, I don't think really realized how big like our, our invitational tournament is when we did Flathead Invite. We have, well, this year we probably would have had 1,000 participants. And they, they've got it where there's only 200 you can have at a, at any one contest in cross-country. So because of that, that's why we went to quads and in some cases, we're doing a whole Western double A. And we're doing it over two days to break it up so we can get as many of those participants running.
We see some of our costs going down with transportation. However, when you're not charging at the gates and you're not charging for activity tickets, there's probably a $60,000 hole in each of the high schools. We'll deal with that a little bit later though. Right, Gwen? I'm breathing for a second, but, no. Gwen and Micah and Kelly have been tremendous. They understand kind of where we are and charging and not charging, we're not charging this year at this time.
They're going to ask for forgiveness.
Yes, yes. How about giving it, paying it forward, Jeff? Yes, so thank you.
Outstanding job, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Rebecca in here?
Hey, Rebecca.
I noticed that the cheer was being allowed at the team sports, but the bands were not. Can you talk a bit about the relative sizes of that or the decision that went into that, please?
Mark's coming to the microphone.
Sure. Right now, we want to, if, if a student has, is there, we want to be able to have their parents there at the event. And a football team, we're saying there would be a couple hundred bands in the stands. When you bring the band in at 120, you multiply that by two, we'd have another 240 there at the facility. We are going to work with our health officer to hopefully, when we get to homecoming, to have the marching band perform. We're hoping that we could crown a king and queen at halftime. So working through those challenges with our health officer, if all goes well with our numbers and so forth, we're hoping we can manage that through a timeline where we let the kids come in to the facility and they would leave and not cross-contaminate.
And Mark and I both asked to have the band there. We were advocates from the beginning to do that, but the health officer thought that would just be too many participants added to there.
Oh, absolutely. I was just wondering how many people are involved in cheerleading? I didn't know how big that group was.
We're limiting it to 12 at our varsity contest and 12 at our JV contest.
Thank you. Perfect. And thank you, guys.
Yes, thank you.
And when is homecoming this year at Glacier?
The 20, September 21st through the 26th.
Okay. And Bryce, the Flathead?
One week before though.
Okay.
And we helped motivate our kids and told them, "Let's bring great excitement. You can't go to the game. You can't go to the show." "We can't have an assembly." Our kids said, "We'll figure out a way."
All right. Good luck.
I think it's also worth noting that Calispo Middle School will be following very closely with all of the guidelines from the high schools as well.
All right. First action item, personnel. Any questions about the, what was presented here? New hires?
There is one amendment that came in late and it's a one-year-only designation to Deborah Sonier?
Yep. Okay.
I was hired as a one-year-old.
Okay. Sue?
Tracy, I have a question. I noticed that on some of these new positions, they're not necessarily new people, but they're going from 1.0 to 1.2? Could you explain that a little bit?
Yeah, so that's part of the rec program where we don't have enough students for a full-time FTE. And so we have asked the teachers if they would be able to take on an additional class. So that's where you see the 1.2 and it is at the high school. So yeah. It's been a very collaborative effort and just an amazing effort. So yeah, we do have some teachers that are very excited about that additional pay.
Jeff?
Can you explain the domino effect after one year with all the, with the new hires and the teachers that have moved from onsite to remote?
So if we go back to a traditional learning method, then everybody would go back to their old positions. And those one-year-only positions would, would be forfeited. They would not continue unless we have additional needs, unless we have growth in the district. But they would not be, go ahead, Kelly.
I think like speaking, the teacher that was in the remote education center, they would go back to a position that was in their endorsed area. We don't guarantee a school and we don't guarantee the specific grade level or, it just, we are saying you have a job, but we wait and see what the master's schedule looks like.
Yes.
Right.
But the one-year-only's are truly that one-year-only. So if we go back to a traditional model, those positions, we do have the flexibility of not filling them again the next year.
So the new hires just for, to handle the two types of teaching, they know that they may be unemployed a year from now.
Yes. They all know it's a one-year-only contract.
Whereas the other ones that have a one-year-only for remote have a job to go back to.
Yes. But a teacher that is not on a one-year-only contract does have a guaranteed position with the district. So if we go back to a traditional teaching model, then they would go back into the classroom.
Well, weren't some of those 1.2 one-year-only contracts? Or they were all one-year-only contracts of existing teachers?
The additional 0.2 is a one-year-only piece.
Oh, the 0.2 is?
0.2 is not the one.
I saw 1.2 there, not this 0.2.
So it would, I'd have to look at the actual name to see if that is a new teacher. I don't think we have any new teachers that are teaching a 1.2. We might. But if you're seeing it where it's a 1.0, the 0.2 is the one-year-only, the 1.0.
Oh, yep, it says it right there, like Stephanie Hill, 0.2 one-year-only.
Well, when I was looking at it-
Yep, so Stephanie Hill is a-
It says teacher.
Ten-year teacher and she's a permanent 1.0 FTE, but her 0.2 is a one-year-only. Because she's teaching an additional two classes.
So if you can scroll down some more. Yeah, there's a whole series of 1.2s there, so.
In that final column, it says this is a one-year-only change. So those teachers are currently 1.0 and they're moving up to a 1.2. And after one year, they'll go back to their original contract.
So the verb, the wording in the far-right column where it's one-year-only change is to distinguish between a one-year contract, and this is still a one-year contract, but you're trying to distinguish between those that would go back to their prior or have a job versus those that would not have a job.
Correct. Yep.
Right.
And that also is referenced in their contract. So the contracts that are issued references the pieces that are ten, or that are one-year-only.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Scott?
Is that 0.2 coming out of COVID budget? Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
The people online cannot hear my nod.
In case you wonder, we currently have four people online.
I heard the nod.
Thank you, Rebecca.
So I entertain a motion to approve.
I move that we approve the personnel action items as presented.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Rebecca?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. IT salary schedule and placement.
Yeah, so I believe that we brought this to you last time, the concept. We have spoken to you about the reason why we brought this forward, the market adjustments that we're considering. We did go back and I guess put some final tweaks on it and finalized the numbers so that we have better figures for both year one and year two. And we're presenting those for final discussion and approval tonight. Jack, would you like to add something?
I guess if you go to the third page, the last page? Or no, the second to last page. So the sharing of the $78,000 cost is $40,000 in the first year and 30, almost 39 in the second year. And it was trying to make sure the, the sharing was similar in each year for all the participants. And then addressing any, and trying to have the steps and lanes be consistent from one year to the next is what we're really fine tuning there.
Thank you for your work on this. It's well-needed.
Your preference. Rich initiated it, so thank you.
Any questions for Tracy? Ursula?
I'm just a little bit confused on the split of why it's different. Are we making up for past years? I guess I'm a little, like why it wouldn't go up the second year with steps?
So what, we were pretty significantly off of the market, our local market. And so for us to go ahead and make that jump in one year and get them up to where it was, we felt that that was too expensive to take that in this next coming year. So we broke it up in a two-year, a two-year process so that we're making up part of it this year and part of it the next year, and then they will be up to market.
So we go a little more than halfway there this year? And then the rest of the halfway the next year, but then the year after, it would be the two combined?
It would be whatever, it would be whatever the step and the board-approved goal is.
So is like the 40 plus the 38 plus the step is what the overall, like new cost will be? Like is the 40,000 gets us like halfway to getting them up to pay? Is that right? Or am I confused on how this is working?
No.
Okay, so the 40 gets them about halfway, the 38 gets them the rest of the way?
And then we are on just status quo of how we handle our raises.
But the, but the second year, it'll be the 40 plus the 38?
Yes, for a total of this.
Okay. And then from there on out, it will be that plus the steps?
Correct.
Okay.
Jeff? Jack shaking his head?
No, no, no comment.
Okay.
Was that, was I, am I confused or is that right?
Well, it depends on how much you, you get on your mind.
Is that the general idea?
I'll say yes.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Okay.
Scott?
I make a motion that we approve the IT salary adjustment as presented.
Thank you. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Rebecca, how do you vote?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Toyota lease, also an action item.
We discussed this earlier and basically just, I just suggested motions. Whether I can sign a lease for a replacement, a lease on an automobile.
Any questions about the need?
Not about the need, but does insurance cover the, did it get totaled?
Was everyone okay?
Yeah. Yep.
I move that we approve the lease of a new vehicle.
I second that.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Rebecca? Thank you. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
All right, Jeff. Have fun.
That brings us to the work-study topic. Question, answers of all things COVID. Appreciate Micah for pulling this together because I know there's a lot of questions out there. To be honest, I'm a little surprised there's not much more of an online presence.
Yeah.
I, I am too, a little bit. So we have four people online and I have asked our administrative team to also be here and represent so that if you have questions specific to a building or an elementary-type issue, something that maybe myself, Kelly, or Bill would not be able to answer, or anything related to budget or special services, we just wanted to have an opportunity to engage more in that discussion with the board. We've obviously been talking about it in very lengthy meetings. And there are some, there are some questions that are out there. Certainly ones I have fielded from the community and from teachers and board members. And I just want to be able to give that opportunity to ask, so why this or why not that? You know, I think one of the questions that was out there and was mostly answered was around activities. So I think we've, we've covered that one for now. And I, and there are some things that I want to be able to share with you, but I also want you to be able to ask the questions that you have. So I would like to open it up for those questions.
Well, I'll kick it off because I know I've heard from many teachers and parents, you know, you compare to what other school districts are doing. Some have done a hybrid model of maybe in the morning, an afternoon split, or maybe two days on, two days off, remote. But that was something that, I guess that ship is sailed for us. But-
Well, there is still two days before-
There's still two days. But I know everything we do has logic behind it. Can you kind of just touch on why the hybrid model wasn't maybe a viable option for school district five?
Yeah, and I think, I think when we go back to early July when Bill and Kelly and I sat down and we put in our process, you know, we put in our project management approach and we looked at processes and people and public relations and price and all of these different factors, one of the things, and part of that included educating ourselves, like what else is out there? What are other nations doing that have brought schools back together? And certainly there are 1,001 different models that you can choose from. And one of the things that I said right from the very start was that if, if we're able to open in phase two and we have to move backwards in phases, if this is really about the health and safety of our students and our community, I don't know that we should be coming back to school at all. We, if that's really what we're after, if like when the governor went through the initial lockdown and there were very many cases and things were pretty low, that was, that was something that in my mind said, "It doesn't make sense. If we're having to move backward, we really should be looking at protecting the health and welfare of everybody." And part of what happens in a hybrid model is you're going to bring half the kids in. Half the kids at Flathead High School are still 700 kids. And I don't know how much more protection you're offering in bringing back just half. And then there was some research that was done and conversations with epidemiologists who said, "Understand that if you move to that hybrid model, you are potentially creating more contact for kids who are going to be out of the building for up to three days at a time and they're going to be in childcare because their parents work or they're going to be going to the grocery store or the post office." So everything that you do down the line has this consequence of creating potentially more contacts. And, and then you throw in things like, "Well, what can we do within our budget? And what does it look like for our families, our community?" I think when you see 12% of our students are choosing remote, everybody had that option to choose that. But our, our community said to us, "Hey, we want to be back in school." Our teachers said, "We want to be back in school." And one of the things that, that I find challenging with that is, and we've experienced it and I can give you a couple of examples. I got an email and a phone call from a parent whose child is going to a school that's in a hybrid model. They said, "We want to transfer into the district because I cannot afford to be at home three days a week with my child when they're not in school." And so you start running down the domino effects of what happens if we take that approach and who can afford to be at home? We, you know, I've talked with Ned Cooney, with Flathead Best Beginnings, there is not the infrastructure and support for childcare in our Valley to accommodate all of those things. And so it's taking a, you know, I understand that some people think that, "Well, if we do this, then, then this." And there have been, there have been conversations about, "Well, what if we just did half-days for everybody?" And, and again, in that half-day, the student, the kids have to go somewhere. And so it's really responding partly to our community, what I've heard from our business leaders. And then you throw in things like transportation and food service and cleaning and all those other pieces that go into what makes up a school district, and it becomes very complicated. Looking at what the press has, has put out there in the, in the backlash from some of our counterpart districts, say in the double A and, and what's going on with them and, and parents coming back and saying, "We can't do this." And I think it also doesn't take into account our, our population that is disadvantaged in a lot of respects. And you are going to increase that gap for those students and make it even that much more difficult for them to engage and be a part of school. And so that is the reason for the most part, in a nutshell.
Rebecca Lynn? Yeah, I had a question. If we do end up moving backwards, as you say, are we, are you still really thinking that it's fully online or fully virtual? Or is there a possibility for, you know, a small amount of having teacher contact to get set up for a project and then the kids go off and do it themselves? Or is there some sort of, are we set up well for if we do need to move back towards a more limited in-person teaching?
The answer to that, Rebecca, is yes. We did leave ourselves the opportunity in our phase-one approach where we could come back in limited, in smaller groups. And we would certainly address that as if we move backwards in phases. And especially in a, in a long-term closure. I think that would be really important that we continue to provide opportunities to engage. Uh, I think that would be really important that we continue to provide opportunities to engage. Um, I certainly heard that from some of our administrative team. Uh, they would support that. And again, it would be taking into account, uh, you know, the metrics within our school that would make that determination for us. And, uh, and I'll, I can talk a little bit more about that in just a minute. But yes, we have that opportunity and we left open the opportunity for our vocational programs that require students, literally require them to be on hand uh, to engage in that curriculum. And so we want to be able to do that.
Awesome, thank you. And, but we're set up administratively for it too? Like our, our groups are set so that they're easier to go in? Or is that not something we were able to do?
I don't know if I understood the question.
Well, if you have sort of more cohorting, it's easy to get, you know, a small group in at a time. And if you have everybody with very, very dispersed schedules, it becomes more difficult to bring them in. If, you know, one person has to be in at one and then two, you know, at different times and places.
Yes, yeah, we would be able to look at a, a different cohorting model. I think in the elementary schools, it's, it's much easier to do that. In our middle schools and high schools, uh, that will create some, some interesting challenges. You know, even the, the three hundred fifteen students, uh, that we looked at and their schedules, they had three thousand course requests. And so trying to fit, you know, so now multiply that times, uh, three thousand high school students and, and what does that look like? Um, they would be challenging, but it, it is doable. Uh, you could look at things like block schedule, you could look at something, uh, one idea that was out there was rather than bringing them in, uh, two days at a time and three days off, is bring them in for a, for a two-week period. Um, so that you actually have a, a, in, in essence, a mandatory quarantine. And so lots of different parts and pieces that go into that, but yeah.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
Micah, how are the metrics coming? I know you and Bill were working on metrics and you kind of gave us a taste of that last time we were here.
Yes, uh, the taste is still just a taste at this point. Uh, but, uh, what I can tell you is that we have, uh, what we call our COVID Advisory Council. Um, it is made up of Craig Lembrecht, the CEO of KR8, uh, Kerry Knuckles, uh, with the Flathead County Health Department, Tamale Robinson with the Flathead County Health Department, uh, Teresa, I don't know, I'm in Litchfield. Um, I want to say Teresa.
Yes.
I think it is Teresa, uh, who's an epidemiologist, area superintendent. And, um, we are meeting again on September first to iron out those metrics, uh, for what that could look like. And, and part of the reason why we want to have specific metrics for our district is because in a county perspective, you can have lots of cases and have very, very few that are actually school-aged children. And so as we look at that, we will have to balance what's happening in our community, what the available resources are at Kalispell Regional Health Center, what contact tracing is available through the county health department and those kind of things that play into that bigger picture. But, you know, if, if, if it came to it where we had to start making some decisions, I would see trying to make those decisions at the lowest level possible. Where it might be a classroom that gets quarantined or a building that gets quarantined rather than an entire district that gets quarantined. So, uh, and, and it all comes back to that goal. We want to be in person with our, with our staff and our students. And we're going to, you know, the shared responsibility, we keep hammering it on social media, on our district website, wash your hands, watch your distance, wear a mask. And so all these things, uh, that we've put together and that the county health, health department has supported and our local pediatricians have supported as well, uh, play into that.
Will? So, Micah, you're talking about metrics. Have we, have you thought about establishing metrics for success or failure? So at the end of the year, we can say, here's our metrics, here's where we hit. Would you get?
No. Um, it's a big elephant, it's, I can only eat one bite at a time. But I think that is certainly something, something that we could do. And, uh, you know, I, I think the longer we can stay open and support our students and, and families and community, the better off, uh, we're going to be and we're going to be able to say those are successes along the way. But great point.
First one?
Um, so just kind of an idea of how things will work. And it sounds like maybe you don't have all of the, all of the specific answers for this figured out. But let's say an elementary teacher gets the call from the health department. You maybe have been exposed. I know right now testing is taking a long time. Do we put in a substitute teacher right away? Is it the teacher's responsibility to tell us? Um, if somebody had to quarantine, if a student has to quarantine, do they, are they online? Or is it kind of like they're getting sent work home, like when they're sick? Like, how does that work? Like, let's say a teacher gets sick or a teacher doesn't get sick, a, a teacher is exposed. What happens then?
Hey, well, you asked six questions, so.
Right, right. Can you tell me the answers to all of them?
Absolutely. I'll let Callie talk about the student. But let's say that, um, in a building, you have two possible scenarios. One, a teacher contracts COVID and is positive. The county health department would let, you know, I'm feeling ill, they get tested. Or even if they don't, the county health department says, yeah, you have the symptoms, you need to go home and quarantine. Um, they will do that. Um, in that situation, what we have proposed is that we would put a substitute teacher in there. But if the teacher is still able to work remotely, like I might not even be symptomatic and have COVID.
Right.
But, and so I could work remotely. We would still like that teacher to be able to work remotely as opposed to going into the FF-CRA leave. There is the potential in, in these scenarios that a teacher could be asked to quarantine multiple times, uh, in a year. And so trying to protect our employees, trying to keep the continuity of education going within the classroom, um, we would like to be able to have that teacher remote into the class if they're capable of doing that and continue teaching and with the supervision of a substitute teacher.
Oh, so the teacher would remote into the class?
Yes.
So the students would still be in class?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Which sounds great. What if it's twenty teachers? Right, it's like, so part of it is, is building in that capacity and what do we have availability for subs? And, and different things like that. But we, you know, I, I guess what I would say is that everything that we do, we are going to do our very best to try and accommodate and, and keep that continuity going.
Okay.
On the student side, if a student is receiving their education on campus and they need to go into quarantine, if it's a short-term quarantine, they would stay with their home-based on-campus teacher. And that teacher would treat it like anything else, just a short-term illness. Um, if it is a long-term, and we're talking maybe a long-term, uh, then there is that potential that we could move them into the remote education center. One of the things, we learned a lot last spring when we basically were given twenty-four hours notice to go remote. And we've learned some lessons. Uh, and so we're doing things a little bit differently this year to prepare for a few more scenarios. And one of the things that building administrators are working with their teachers on is to, they're spending a lot of time this week, uh, training on Google Classroom, on the other software, whether it's the clever, um, history science. I mean, tomorrow, all the elementary teachers are going to be out at Rankin's, full day, uh, in technology professional development. Uh, both high schools have a lot of, um, technology professional development going on this week. Same thing with the middle school. Our goal, uh, K through twelve, is that every student has the ability and is comfortable and knows how to go remote. And this has to be done by September eleventh. That we've trained up all our students so that in the event we have to go remote and we have a twelve-hour notice or whatever it is, we aren't going to miss a beat. Uh, then the expectation is after that, is that every week, at least once a week, the teachers do some sort of activity, some classroom lesson, where our students are kind of in remote, that they, they are logging into their Chromebooks. So they're doing something again so that it wasn't just a one-time shot and then we never talk about it again for months. Uh, so it's an ongoing top-line awareness. We will, um, in the winter, if, um, by chance, there's a snow day and school is closed due to weather, uh, we will most likely go to remote and not make the day up as they need to here. We won't, we won't miss a beat. And, uh, when I've shared that with parents, they have been absolutely delighted about that because it hasn't missed the end of the year calendar.
Right.
Uh, not so much when I talk to students about it. That's a next beg, depending on if yours here or not, so. But we, we've learned some lessons and we have done things a little bit differently this year.
So just a clarification, you know, you said if it's a short term that they have to be out of the classroom, it would kind of be handled as it has been in years past if a student is sick. But is it fourteen days that they need to, I, I don't, it isn't fourteen days, right? It's like a little less than that it seems I saw in our procedures?
I can answer part of that. So, um, I know of a person whose husband had COVID, who was tested initially, was told that they didn't have COVID. They were told to just kind of self-quarantine. Later got a call and said, oops, you tested positive, but your quarantine is up in three days. Because it goes back to the initial contact and, and those kind of things. So a quarantine could be up to fourteen days for someone who is a close contact, ten days for someone who has contracted COVID and has tested positive. And it goes, and it, and it backdates to that point in time when they were first symptomatic. So it, it could have a wide range depending on when all of that happened.
Okay. And so, but it, you're also saying, Callie, that that at-home work might not look like it has in the past. Like it might be more interactive through Google Classroom and things like that. So if a student has to quarantine for fourteen days, it won't be necessarily the same way that it has in years past. I mean, for, that's a long time. I don't know many kids that have to take off more than a week for being sick. So, okay, it'll be, it'll look a little.
Before those days are weekends.
That's true. So it'll look, it'll look a little different. It'll look a little different.
We're hoping to coordinate those around holidays and school break.
Perfect, let's do that. And then, um, I, this is, this would be a metric thing, but will it be, will it maybe look something along the lines of if a certain, I mean, if half the students have to quarantine in a classroom, is that, that will kind of be something that will trigger that the whole class will go?
Yes.
Online?
Yeah. And we're probably looking at a percentage, um, when it comes to a school and a percentage of staff who maybe are out, a percentage of students or a percentage of students in a classroom.
Okay.
Um, and that's where I feel like Tamale will really be able to help us. And, and part of it gets into, you know, rates of transmission and, and all of those other pieces that, um, have more of a scientific approach to it.
And I guess without testing, I mean, I know we have tests, but the results are still taking quite a while to get back. Is that still the situation that the county's in?
To the best of my knowledge, yes.
So without testing, we'll kind of be, we'll be looking more at the numbers of, mm, that you'll be quarantining, not because you have it, but because you could have it? Is the numbers will have to be working from?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think that's a really good segue into, um, a recent conversation that I had, uh, late last week. It was about a ten-minute conversation with Ryan Pitt, uh, who is the chief nurse, uh, chief of nursing at Kalispell Regional. Um, and is also kind of their, he's their Bill Sullivan. Um, and, um, he called to say that Kalispell Regional Health is wanting to partner with all the schools in the county. Um, and they're, uh, contributing a significant portion of their CARES dollars into supporting public schools, including testing and contact tracing and working with the county on that, providing additional nursing and physician support and mental health support and just the whole bevy of, uh, ways that they can support our schools. And we have a, they're doing a presentation on Thursday at six o'clock at Glacier High School in the Performant Hall. Uh, there may be a chance to remote into it. Um, and where they want to share more information about what that looks like. But that is county-wide, uh, that they are offering those, those services to us at no cost.
That's fantastic. That's a good ten-minute call.
That was a really good ten-minute call. The sun is shining on me today.
Couple of questions online here from Kim Anderson. Um, as the case in Flathead, are rising with the average ages reported typically being forty-nine and under, it seems more prudent to have defined metrics in place to evaluate if we should even be in class before the first day of school. Can you explain why this would be established after the fact? And then the, another question by Cam is, if a student or staff member shows symptoms of COVID, are they required to have a test and produce negative test results before being allowed to return to school or work?
Yeah, I think the, the, the first question, Kim, is, is a fair question, you know? One that we have certainly wrestled with and that I, I stay up at night going, should we even be opening our schools? Um, with what's going on and, and the indications that I have from, uh, our county health department at this point uh, and also from Kalispell Regional and, and our pediatricians, is that yes, you can open schools. And if they were telling me something different, I'd be coming to the board and saying, timeout, we're going to, we need to reevaluate this and look at it differently. Um, and that's a really, part of it is, it's a hard decision to make just based on emotion and, and, you know, and not relying on, on people who, uh, look at this all the time. And I think if, if there was any concern, you know, obviously there's nothing that's a hundred percent risk-free, but if there was, uh, great concern within our county, that they would look at that. I did email Tamale today and I haven't gotten a response yet, but I, I, I'm really curious of the positive cases that are in the county. How many are actually in Kalispell? Like, and then how many of them are actually school-aged children? Um, you know, you can kind of see when you go to the Flathead County website and you look at the metrics, it's like, hey, well, Flathead County is a hundred and twenty thousand people and we are, you know, fifty miles from one end of the county to the other. And so where those cases are occurring and who they're impacting, uh, certainly are, are part of that conversation. So, um, to answer that question, yes, if I was being told otherwise, uh, I would be asking the board to consider that. And I, and I would also say it's up to the board to consider that as well. Um, I know you're relying on me for recommendations, um, but I think if that's a, a concern for you, that it should be discussed and, and addressed. And the second question?
It was about having, do you have to have a negative test before you return to work?
Only if the county health department is, you know, so if you were, if you were exposed and you were considered a close contact, the county health department is going to be the person to tell you, you have to stay home for fourteen days. They may say, you know what, we can't even get a test right now. Um, you're just going to be quarantined for fourteen days. And that is, is what it is. So, um, I, and I think it leads into the larger conversation around just health in general with, with our school population. And there are going to be other viruses, the influenza and whooping cough and other things that our kids are potentially going to have that have the same symptomology. Um, and they may be able to test for those things in a, in a relatively short time in a doctor's office and say, yes, you have the, the flu. Um, and here's what needs to happen. And so, um, there was a recent, uh, in fact, I just got it, uh, this late last night, uh, from Dr. Cole with some additional guidance that we can look at. I shared it with Sarah Cole and Bill relative to how we're going to address each one of those situations. So, um, you know, being symptom-free for twenty-four hours if, if you, you know, or a cough that is suddenly changed relative to another condition that you may have. So we'll have all of that information as well.
Uh, Mr. Lawrence? I got a couple of questions for the technology component of what we're doing. Um, you know, I, I know in the spring we had a pretty quick rollout. Um, and I think we learned a few things. Um, and I know you've got a pretty savvy IT team that can step up the challenges. Um, how is IT prepared to support the seven hundred and thirty students, um, that are choosing the remote learning opportunity?
Well, we're, um, just in the last couple of days, we're starting to, um, receive, um, names and addresses of those students who are going to struggle with connectivity so we can reach out. So we can reach out to them. We've also reached out to several ISP's and had meetings with them over the last couple of weeks. So we are prepared to be able to, or better prepared to offer services this go-around and last.
You know, I know there have been parents who have asked about synchronous learning. And from what I understand, that's a little complicated.
Yes, it is. It is. It's complicated because we don't have a lot of control of both connections. So, but we're, you know, we're gonna be diligent about working and making that as best that we can for each and every student.
Yeah.
And some of it just has to come down to bandwidth. We just, there's just not enough bandwidth.
Exactly. But I will say this, that many of the ISP's reached out to us and are willing to work with us to do the best that we can. And we also have some other things that we're working on, providing wireless sites, possibly some hotspots in the future for those people and students who, you know, have low or no connectivity. So there's lots of things that we're working on. Also, we've ordered Chromebooks. As you know, we ordered 200 enhanced Chromebooks for teachers and another 1,300 Chromebooks to add to our 3,500. So we're right really close to the one-to-one for the district, which has been our goal for a long time.
Excellent work. Thank you.
Lance, we have approximately 200 students that have requested to check out a school district on Chromebooks.
Okay.
And do remote.
Okay. Excellent. Other questions for administration? There is a whole sea of administrators out there that would love to talk at the school board meeting. They want to go down in the minute, so.
Mike, could I get a, could I request a 10-minute presentation by each administrator as to what they're doing in the building?
I did not hear a second on that.
I actually do have a question. I received an email, or the whole board did, about our mask policy and asking for an amendment on that. I don't think we need to address it tonight, but I think it needs to be brought up. I thought it was a good suggestion. And it would help teachers and administrators in dealing with mask issues. You know, kids that walk around like this. If we could amend it to say possibly that the mask will cover the nose and mouth. Something to think about.
Yeah. You guys want me to talk about face coverings?
Yeah, enforcement of face coverings.
Sure. So, when the board met and unanimously approved face coverings, we didn't have a lot of detail on it, other than face coverings are required in all our school buildings and on district transportation. And that includes students, staff, and visitors. And then the next day, the governor said, "Hey, face covering is required." And I'm like, "Thank you, Governor." In a lot of ways, I thought that would be, that would help. And it does, in the sense that the governor's directive is a four-page document that has, you know, it defines a face covering. It defines, it does specify covering the nose and mouth. It does allow for facials. So, we heard our pediatricians talk about, you know, the best thing is a cloth, two-ply, three-ply, paper-type mask that covers the nose and mouth and that the facial doesn't give that same protection. But we did not define that. And the governor also said that his order is the minimum. And then that school boards and that county health departments can go more restrictive. When it comes to the enforcement, it's pretty easy to see who has a face covering on, right? And then you get into the level of face covering. As I look out there, I don't know how many of those are two-ply or three-ply or, you know, you look at box, you look at handkerchiefs, you look at, you know, any variety of things. And I don't know how readily available our administration is going to be to, you know, "What, am I going to come up and test your face mask?" I mean, I just don't know. And I think that some of what the governor's order did was allow for, excuse me, some accommodation. And I think that was the intent of that initially. But, you know, I feel like what we have is enforceable. You know, we do have a legal obligation to follow the directive of, at a minimum, of what the governor's order was. And so, if someone comes into our building and says, "I'm not wearing a face mask," they have to leave. You know, their option is going to be remote learning. And that is a reasonable accommodation. And even if someone came in and with a doctor's note that said, "Yep, I don't have to wear a face mask." Well, a reasonable accommodation is remote learning. And so, a lot of those challenges have been addressed. And there are certainly exceptions to the rule, but they're very, very limited. And so, I guess, you know, the question I think in front of us is, how much more in detail or how much more stringent do you want to be? Or is the governor's order, does that satisfy what we're after? First one?
I don't know if we are, you know, for being filmed or not, but looking around, to me, it seems like there is, you know, amongst the adults in the room, a pretty marked difference in what seems to be the comfort level of wearing masks this week compared to a month ago. And this is just my two cents in this, but I think that there is a learning curve. And I think that what we have written into our policies where it says that it's going to be a learning process will be as effective as any more rules that we could put in. I think that giving people the time to become more comfortable with their masks and the encouragement to become comfortable with their masks and even potentially the encouragement to look around for another mask if they have one that keeps falling off or if they have one that's obviously bothering them is going to, like, effectively work as well as any more rules would. And that's just my two cents. And of course, I would like everyone to have the most coverings that they can have, but not everyone is going to show up the first day in a mask that fits them or is comfortable or that they have ever worn before. And as a learning institution, I think that teaching them is going to be the way to handle that situation. And that's just my two cents. If anybody, you know, thinks that we should add to it, I'm definitely open to that, but.
I have a question, a little bit different tact. But, Callie, you had mentioned earlier that there are 6,081 students enrolled right now. How does that compare to last year or the beginning of the year? I'm thinking A and B.
So, the question is, are we up in enrollment?
Right.
And so, when we look, so when I looked at numbers early on in July, we are at about 6,000. I think we're 6,003. And now we're 6,081. We are seeing an increase. Those final numbers are gonna be, gonna be challenging. I know, I talked to Judy last night in enrollment and she said that she had to withdraw some kids for homeschool. But we're, I mean, we have people up there all day long registering. And so, right now, all signs point to increased enrollment, but we're gonna have to really-
Compared to last year, we do.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep. But we'll have to wait until the final count, when the real numbers come through.
Bill, how has it been getting supplies? I know Plexiglas or dash shields were in the, in some of the COVID money.
The supplies are certainly coming in. It'll be everybody's, the dash shields were supposed to be here last week. They have arrived today. They will be in our storage unit tomorrow morning. It is on Rick's agenda to make sure that we get those divvied out and into the schools. You know, there are a lot of different things that have been ordered, a lot of sanitizer, a lot of wipes, a lot of those things. Depending on what you look at, depending on what you get, you try to find, kind of depends on the availability and then certainly how long it takes to get here. I think we're pretty well-equipped for opening the school. Kind of the next phase of this will be, in the next couple of weeks, is to determine, as school gets started, okay, what would be the next phase of ordering that we have to do? And what are the things that we need? I think principals have done a great job with the budgets that they have trying to determine building-specific items that they have ordered. We do have a lot of Plexiglas in all the buildings. In particular, up where our office managers sit, you know, sneeze guards between those. I know we've bought a lot of that through local vendors here. I'm not sure how much they have left, but we have gotten quite a bit of Plexiglas. The dash shields are here. They'll be delivered in the morning. We'll get those to schools, lots of sanitizer, lots of other things that certainly we need. I think I would like to also say to that, as I get into this deeper and deeper and the more I am into it, certainly processes and procedures that we have in place are as equally as important as all of those things we are buying. What does a school look like when kids walk around? And what do teachers look like when they are meeting? And going back to something that Ursula said a little earlier, you know, when one person gets, is tested positive, let's say a teacher, you know, what does that mean for the other teachers that they've been hanging around? And certainly, we are stressing three things that we believe are a shared responsibility of everybody, our faculty and our family members. With all of the mitigation things that we have in place, which are important, the three stresses are gonna be wash your hands, watch your distance, and wear your mask. Those three things are pretty vital to the things that we do. And in a case that if I am tested positive for COVID, I am responsible to making sure I take care of myself with these two so they don't have to quarantine. So other people don't have to quarantine. And we're trying to do the best we can, especially with staff members. Have your PLC in a different way. If you're all in the same room, make sure that you are more than six feet apart. All of those processes that we certainly aren't used to or accustomed to, we want to be able to change. So when and if we do get a case, we have the least amount of disruption as we can within our building.
Thank you.
Kim Anderson writes, "For instances where face coverings, watch our distance, or good hand hygiene isn't being adhered to by staff, contractors, or visitors, what is the preferred course of action to report and handle those violations?"
Micah, you want to take that? Absolutely. So, today and yesterday, Callie, Bill, myself, Rich, our central office team, we gave our 11th presentation today to all of our schools. The only one that we haven't gotten to yet was Peterson. And we'll do that on Thursday. But we've talked with transportation, we've talked with food service, we've talked with all of our departments and buildings. And a couple of things on that. And I did specifically address face coverings and that they are required. You know, that is the rule. And that one of my concerns is that someone's gonna take a picture and they're gonna post it on social media and someone's not doing what they're supposed to be doing. And that's gonna require another conversation, and a different conversation. Because it's not, it's not an option. And so, we made that very clear. And I certainly expect that we will have people who are going to be informing us of what's going on. I would say first and foremost, report it to your building principal. They are the one in charge in that building and they have that primary responsibility. If the building principal can't address it, then they need to come to Bill or myself and we will address it. If it's a supplier, you know, let's say it's the Pepsi guy or it's the UPS man, it will be a conversation from me to them and saying, "This is what is going to need to happen if you want to continue to come into our buildings." And so, we are going to hold people accountable for taking the responsibility that they need to take in their building. First one?
I know that at the elementary schools, we talk to kids about how to handle bullying or how to handle it, the whole, "If you see something, say something." Are we going to have built into the curriculum ideas for ways that students can talk to each other about things like this? I mean, is that something that is being discussed? And, you know, I think about it in the middle school and high school, I feel like could be even harder. Like, what do you say to your friends, kind of things? A script that they could work with?
Yes. Yes, you may answer.
About violations, the majority of both teachers and parents and anybody, it's that we're still learning a new process. I really want to come into contact with people who are trying to not do the right thing. We usually have just a reminder. And so, I think that, you know, in all of this and all the procedures, and we are still doing this at school. And it felt so good to be with staff. And it wasn't like, "You have to, you have to, you have to." But let's gently remind ourselves, like, "Oh, remember, we need to stay far apart." And I think it's more of that. And so, for kids and bullying and, I don't foresee a bunch of kids trying not wear masks and then the correct response would be a discipline procedure. It would be, "Let's remember how we all need to act." And we're just not coming into that. And so, I see, you know, we will take things as they come. But right now, the feel is, we all want to do the right thing and we might need to be reminded, "Well, let's put our masks over our nose." But we certainly aren't going to be coming down hard on people because I don't believe I've ever been there and I don't see that with kids either. But bullying is bullying if it's over a mask or if it's over anything. So we would always address that appropriately. That being mostly a reminder of our new process.
Tracy?
I do have to say, from a staff perspective, so we are moving to someone tomorrow who is, there's, as they're very, it's totally, there's been 19, 17 of the folks that we're gonna deal with. The staff guys are, we're all learning a new thing. But if we do have a employee that refuses to wear a mask, then we will have that discussion in the center of the center requirement of working ages.
And I would love to hear, well, go ahead, sir. And then I would just like to open it up for all administrators to share their thoughts about moving forward. Sarah? Can we talk at the mic too?
Thanks, Lance. I'm sure more schools are doing super cool things. But I just wanted to give a shout-out to Edgerton and Flathead. So the nurses and I followed Micah and Callie and Bill in presentations to all of the staff and just give a nursing update. And part of that was showing an example of Edgerton teachers who made videos of how to do the right thing, how to wear masks, how to physically distance, how to properly use hand hygiene. And the teachers were hilarious. And then we shared that video clip at all of the schools and other schools got the ideas. Flathead, and Michelle, maybe you should explain, you're kind of proactive. I'm gonna lose the name of it.
Is that an honor code? Yes. Right?
Yep.
Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, so the honor code, we go to Flathead and right on the table, first thing is the honor code. And it's not what not to do, it's what to do. What are the expectations of Flathead kids and staff? And so, I think I see our folks educating in a way that we will have very few kids that are not on board. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Sarah. Would there be administrators that would like to share?
I can't. We're just focusing on the positives and trying to embrace doing the right thing. So I've had student leadership make videos and be the role models and we've talked a lot about that. My message continues to be, you know, this is what allows us to open schools. And we're gonna, we're gonna do it. And, you know, whether we like masks or don't, you know, none of that matters. What matters is, we're gonna do whatever it takes to stay in school. And we're gonna wear our masks. And so, we'll be having our staff teach the honor code and that's, so our honor code came out of our work with MBI and creating just the positive behavioral expectations across the board. And so, all I did was I took the operational document, 28-page document, the district level, and I took that one page out of there where they had to chart the number of different things, right? And I just pulled those things out and I put it into the three categories of our honor code, which is honor yourself, code, which is honor yourself, honor the community, and honor the moment. And all those things fit really nicely in there, boom, there it is. And that's what we're going to be focusing on. And so we'll have staff do little mini lessons, you know, be posted throughout the building, just an easy, simple way, looks familiar because we've had it around a lot of years, but now we're pulling in those guidelines specifically around safety, masks, hand washing.
Michelle? I had meant to ask earlier, 10th through 12th grade can take lunch off campus.
Yes.
Is there, is that going to just be like in years previous? I mean, because we're doing so much work to be able to contact trace.
Right.
Are you asking kids to, like, if somebody gets it, are we just going to ask them who they've been having lunch with or is there any idea for that?
Yeah, that's, you know, that was the big discussion in both high schools, and I know the middle school has talked a lot about lunch, right? The high volume of kids. And so for us, you know, 700 kids per lunch, you know, we don't have enough tables to manage that. So we cannot have all kids eat lunch in the building. Our libraries has been, become a nice little refuge for kids having lunch in recent years, but we're starting a year where we're not having kids eat in the library. We're just not doing it. And so, you know, we have a good procedure. Kids are going to choose an area and a table to sit in for lunch, and then we're going to use the QR code and they're going to check in every day, right? Because we, you know, Brad was the kind of mastermind coming up with this. This wasn't my idea. But to, you know, daily, let's, you know, we need to find a way just to figure out who's at which table every single day, right? In the event of having to do contact tracing. So kids will come in, they'll get their lunch, sit down at the table, and then they've got to all check in using that QR code. And that way, we have a record of who was at that table on the state, you know, specifically. So we'll be able to do that. But kids going out, you know, four kids piling in the car, driving a little Caesar's, I mean, we can't.
Yes.
I mean, we're just, we can't manage that. We, you know, we can't. But kids are going to be with their peers, you know, before school and they're going to be with their peers after school, going places and doing things. And, you know, we can't control everything. And so we developed good systems and good protocols for what we can control, and I think they're going to work pretty well.
Michelle, does the QR code assume that each child has a cell phone?
Well, it doesn't actually because we thought about that and it assumes that somebody at that table will have a cell phone, right? Because you can scan that code multiple times. So if, you know, my buddy sitting next to me does not have a cell phone and I get my lunch and I check in, scan the QR code and I type my name in, then it goes to, you know, hey, here, I'll scan it one more time, now you sign in, right? That's going to take a lot of teaching, right? We're, you know, we don't have any delusions of thinking that we're going to just tell the kids, tell kids what you're going to do, go do it, right? I mean, we, we know that we, meaning the admin team, is going to have to spend a lot of time teaching and going around at lunch and check in, right? We're going to have our fourth period teachers front load some of this. This is how it's going to work. I mean, so, you know, it'll take us a while to get there, but, you know, we debated, the lunch piece was huge, you know, it really was. And we feel like this way, we can have a record of where kids are sitting every single day so that when the health director calls us and says, mm, I mean, we know where this kid was, we'll be able to find it.
Right. I'm just particularly concerned about the ninth graders coming in from a school where cell phones were not allowed, that there might be full ninth grade tables of no cell phones and if there's a system to deal with that of some sort.
Right, well, we'll figure that out. I am behind, there'll be one, there'll be at least one there at every table, if not more.
Mark Fisher will do it. Yeah.
I have a solution, Michelle. Mark Fisher can go around each table and check every kid in. I'll help him.
I have two, two questions. First of all, I must have missed a meeting or something because there's a couple new administrators here that I do not know and I would love to have an introduction. And second of all, I would like to hear from building administrators what we can do as board members to support you this year, if you have any thoughts on that. So first of all, new administration, new building administrators, I know there's a couple out there.
Come on up and introduce yourself.
Come on down.
Did I miss a meeting?
No, no, I noticed the same thing, yeah.
I'm still trying to...
Irons, move on. Yeah. Six feet apart.
Yeah, I'm Joel Ours and I'm the principal over at Glacier High School and I'm very privileged to be here and can't tell you how much, not just support from in-house and fellow admin here, but just for the community as well and supportive and moving over here and getting settled in. And it's been a journey, but it's been good at the same time, so I respect that. The one way you can help me for, that you can support me is just my email for the next two weeks and answer all the...
Hey, Joel, one of, one of, one of the exceptions to the face mask rule is for identification purposes and I don't know if everybody knows your face, so could you like, dang.
Hello.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess just to touch based on what Glacier High School, very similar protocols that, you know, Flathead and others are doing is, we just had what's called Parent University, I think Micah started this last year, where we just have informative meetings with parents. And so we took that upon us and a lot of it was just, it was introductory, what we're going to be doing with all our protocol. A lot of it was COVID-based. We recorded that and then we, for parents that couldn't get logged on and see that, we sent that out in an email so they could review it and have that information as well. And so a lot of this, there's nothing different than what we have in place. The only thing we're just doing different for lunches is we just have assigned seating and so they're, they're going to just have to sit at the same place every day and that's just what it's going to be. And so, you know, the kids leave, they leave and like Michelle said, that's just what's going to have to, can't contract, you know, trace all of that. But we've got some people in pods over there and spread them out a little bit, but they're just going to kind of have assigned seating and, and so we can, we have to move forward with that, so. So any other questions with the Glacier model? I know that we have it online if you want to see it and, and is there any missing information with that? So that's how we've been pushing it out with our staff and parents.
Well, good luck on Friday. I know you have a bunch of freshmen coming your direction.
Yeah. No, it's been good. I think, Michelle, I had to visit with her a little bit. She can attest to this as well with our jamborees that we just had. It was, there was a lot of great energy in the buildings with the, you know, where they come back and they get their schedules and they, you know, check in and pay fees and do all of that stuff. And obviously, a lot of freshmen, a lot of other people as well. And it was just very positive, just a lot of good energy. It was just exciting to hear voices in the buildings and see them just being excited. There wasn't like, Michelle and others have said, that there wasn't a lot of, maybe 1% of that, you know, who had any problems with masks. Everybody showed up with masks and the few that were walking around, they said, hey, here's a mask. And we're like, oh, yeah, I forgot, you know, we give them one. And there wasn't really a big, it wasn't a big issue. It wasn't a big, like Jen said, a big, you know, issue with discipline or having to get on people. And there was a lot of kids walking around and they said, hey, mask up. And, you know, they pulled their mask up and that's, that's all that it took. And so I think they want to be back in school. They're excited to be back in school. You know, I think that they're just going to, you know, they're just willing to do what they need to do to be there. And I don't think we're going to have a lot of rebuke or pushback from, from the protocol. They've been living it for a couple of months already. It's what they do in the community, so it's not like a new thing they have to learn once they come into the building, which is the expectation, so.
Okay? Any other questions? How many freshmen this year at Glacier?
Uh, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I haven't seen that yet, but, yeah, I'll just look it up, but, yeah.
Michelle, how many at Flathead?
Well, before, for learning kids, we were at about 450, which is huge, bigger than last year, but now we're down to about 40, which is still big, really for us.
What'd you say Lance, about 345?
345, okay. Thank you.
Mask off, just briefly.
Hello.
My name's Alan Stanfield. I'm coming over here from Spokane. Lance and Mark have been awesome supporting Joel and I as new guys. And Joel's done a phenomenal job with the staff this week, setting the tone just about how much this is going to be a year where relationships, we always say relationships matter, but this year above, above everything, he's really just setting that tone for the staff to come in and have that time to renew relationships that ended prematurely when the school year ended last year and how we're going to do that with students and how that's going to be the foundation for everything we do. And that's been a nice message to have set, the vision for this year. And then I think you might want to know as a board, Callie's leadership when we created that rec menu was awesome and she said something that stood out to me because I come from Spokane, it's a bigger city, but we're in a two high school district on the north side of town. Where I came from, Meade and Mount Spokane was the split off and there's a lot of rivalry in that two high school district. And she said at that meeting, the collaboration between the two high schools to make this happen and then to turn around has been phenomenal. And shout out to Brad that he's been phenomenal helping me, being new in this role and my counterpart at Flathead, so that's been very appreciative. It was finally rewarding that, like, was that today or yesterday, that Brad actually called me? So then I, I was actually being cut out for something for the first, so that was a little rewarding to have that feedback coming this both ways instead of just me getting it to having to call Brad, so. And then the thing that stood out is just the teachers and the staff in this district having the attitude of just, we want to live in the solution. We want to solve this problem and we want to do it together, so. Been very positive being part of that so far at Glacier and in the district.
Thank you.
Hello, all. I'm Vicki Buck, interim principal at Russell Elementary, stepping in this year for Bill Sullivan. It is so very nice to be here this evening. At Russell, we've seen several changes this year just due to the trickle-down effect of this position. And with that, we have eight different positions with, some related to the trickle-down effect, some related to just a couple of teachers going into the rec teaching center that they were excited that they had the option to do that. And so that's been really neat. The school, the teachers gearing up the last couple of days, the feedback that I've heard from them has been really well received and just knowing that the support that they have from the district administration and from the board members, knowing that you guys are constantly making necessary changes so that we can start safe school has been very reassuring to them and to myself because the majority of them, they came back. And we have almost everybody in our, in our elementary, you know, and we're able to place the majority of those who didn't. And the, the teachers and the staff and the parents are excited to be able to start school on Monday with our students. And so the elementaries all have put procedures in place that are different this year. And we know it's going to be very challenging, but yet everybody is stepping up and they're doing their part to make place. And for the first time in years at Russell Elementary School, our hallway has a schedule so that we can reduce traffic flow. So it's different, but yet we are stepping up to the plate and we thank you for the decisions that you're making for us because we are really looking forward to seeing our students, to interacting with them in person and being able to support them. So thank you very much.
And thank you for taking that on, that one-year assignment.
All right. I'm Ann Castron, new AD at the middle school. I look around the room, I think I have taught well over half of your children. I'm coming, coming out of, after a 30-year career in the classroom. Think last spring when we were off, it was like, yeah, I really don't want to retire, so instead I'm going to take a new job on. But it's been great. I, you know, I, a lot of what everybody said, reiterate, we have a, the cooperation in the district is wonderful, so coming in new, feel like I've got, you know, Trigg and Dallas, but then also Bryce and Mark and then Tracy and, you know, Bill and Callie and Micah, just lots of support all around. You know, probably lots to say thank you for, but I know from the middle school, we are very grateful that we were able to hire new teachers for our pull-out positions. Still haven't figured out how not to make my glasses fog. Because otherwise, without that, we couldn't have done our teaming model. So that was very important and we are, you know, just super happy with that, we could, we could move along with that. And despite the sort of, you know, 11th hour of the situation, I think we got some quality new teachers in the building, so we're excited about that. Yeah, and thanks to the board. I know you all put in a lot of long hours as well, so appreciate your time and thoughtfulness and support of all we're doing.
Thank you. Lynn, do you have anything from the KEA? Do you like to share?
As far as the transitions are going, we have been very, very lucky. The communication, one of the things you said earlier was that you're surprised that there aren't many, as many online participants today or people viewing online. And part of that, I believe, is the communication that's been going out. We've talked extensively with your leadership team and we're sending the same messages out. I have monthly emails or newsletters. The district admin has also come to each of the schools and really has explained that we have a plan, we don't know what the plan is, but our plan is that we're ready for change. You know, and I think that it, it shows that people are a little more calmer about it and that we're feeling more informed. And I believe that's a, you can see a direct correlation with how many people are online right now. So I think the communication piece has really stepped up. And for KEA, it's wonderful because my emails settle down. So anyway, thank you for all you do. This has been a very, very interesting time in our education career, so I appreciate your time.
Ursula?
I was wondering if an administrator could talk to me a little bit about, or talk to us a little bit about, there was some idea, particularly in the elementary schools, that there might need to be a space where kids could go and take off their masks. There'd been some discussion about having classes outside a little bit. Is there, is there anything coming together with that? Is there anything you can report on that? Just to kind of mix it up? I'm going to keep asking until you all get up. I'll keep asking.
I, so...
So at Rankin, we've created, or we're working on creating a schedule.
I know at Rankin, we're working on, we've created a schedule where most of our grade levels are about 50, so we're almost like a block schedule where there's 50 kids outside and 50 kids in the lunchroom at a time. So we're able to be spread out enough that we can be mask-free during those times. We're also creating some break spaces or mask-free zones where, with rules around it and how long you sit here and, you know, this is how we sanitize the area. Teachers are getting really, really creative with that and what that will look like. And a lot of teachers are planning to do things outdoors, putting in their schedules, walks, you know, through the neighborhood or walks, you know, around the campus and trying to do as much outside, spread out. We're lucky that we do have a big field to be able to, to be able to spread out. So teachers are getting more creative than I've ever seen before to be able to provide opportunities for kids to have mask breaks. So I know that we all purchased, I think all of us purchased lanyards for all of our elementary kids so they could have a lanyard for the day to hang their masks on.
elementary kids, so they could have a lanyard for the day to hang their masks on. So when they're going, walking to the lunchroom, they have their mask on, but when they sit down to eat, you know, they can just take it off and they're not losing it, or forgetting it outside, and then we're having, you know, lost and found for masks, because that's what I had envisioned in my head. And so we're trying to be creative with some of those things, so their mask is always on them, and then, say, when they're in PE and they're running around, they can, you know, tuck it in their shirt, pull it back out. I think that that's a, been a, will be a pretty creative way. And teachers are even embracing that, too. I noticed today when I handed out the lanyards, they all stuck it on their lanyards and had them around their neck, so. I know several of us have purchased buffs and masks, too, for, are with our school logo. I know, like, TMS has theirs on a brace. Have, we all, I, we all have similar things coming, and Dewey already called me and said I had to order more because they're selling like hotcakes, so. So I think people are embracing some of that, you know, school culture and spirit, and so we're just excited we get to be at school, so. I was gonna bring up on another subject, that I've been working with a group of teachers around our elementary district to create some videos for parents for remote learning, so not just for the rec center, but for if we have to go remote. We have teachers that are creating videos on, for parents, on tutorials on how to log on to Google Classroom, or this is how to help your student submit an assignment, or this is how, what you need to do to get a weekly grade report, or just all those helpful tips through the different platforms and things we use. So our teachers are in the process of creating those for if we had to go remote in a single classroom, or to help with the rec center. So I emailed about a dozen teachers that I know in the elementary across all of our sites that are, are techie, techie teachers, and they all jumped in and are willing to help. So that's in the works as well. Nice.
Thank you. I know Ursula wants to hear from all of us, so people can all touch on something different.
Just reassure me.
I think that all of us have had to rework our master schedules, you know? We came back, and the mask mandate, you know, obviously changes quite a few things and different procedures that we had in place, pre-mask, post-mask, some of those things changed, too. Biggest things would be kind of our big group areas, like lunchtime, recess time, things like that. So, you know, some places before school, all of us are probably intersection off our playground in different zones. As far as regular recess time, hedges, we have kind of two playgrounds, so there'll just be one grade level out at a time versus a K-two recess and a three-five recess, it'll just be kindergarten on this playground, third grade on this playground, and then five minutes for them to get in before the next two grades come out. So we've really had to expand our recess schedule, same with lunch. You know, lunch used to be about an hour in the lunchroom, and any of you that have come in and eaten in the lunchroom, it's kind of twenty minutes, and then that grade goes out while the next grade's coming in, and you're wiping tables between, and it's pretty crammed, and, and now it's two hours for lunch, and we've really just expanded that time. So we have lost some instructional time, but we've also, you know, changed our intervention schedules to where we're pushing para support into classrooms and into grade levels, so assigning one para per grade level versus having six paras support that grade level all at, for like a forty-minute chunk. They're gonna have one para that they have access to all throughout the day, per se, so that that one para stays with the same group of kids in the lunchroom, on the playground for contact tracing purposes and things. So things are gonna look a little bit different there as well. Playground tubs, you know, hedges, we actually just bought a beautiful new ball basket, and I even upgraded the off-road wheels, so when they drag it in and out of our shed, it goes up and down the ramp a little smoother than the small little wheeled ones. And unfortunately, we can't use that this year, you know, all the different grade levels coming out and grabbing balls and putting them back in, so we're gonna have tubs for playground equipment for each grade, so there's gonna be a big ball bin with jump ropes and frisbees and things like that for fifth grade. And then that goes in the shed, and then third grade comes out, the third grade tub comes out. And, you know, we're gonna be able to potentially electrostatic spray those tubs and try to disinfect that when we can, and, you know, washing hands before and after recess. So we're changing everything we're doing, and it's been a lot of sit and get and a lot of procedures. I mean, you'd be amazed at all the things that you have to try to think of, how to get lunchboxes from the classroom back to, or from the lunchroom back to their classrooms, it's a process that you didn't think of before, because before you just threw it all on a bin and somebody carried it back to the classrooms. So we're, we're going through everything we can, and I'm sure there's gonna be some things we haven't thought of, and they're gonna pop up, and we're gonna come up with a solution on the fly. And I think, you know, as well as we did with twenty-four hours notice and remote learning last year, we're gonna come up with a solution on the fly for those things that we haven't thought of yet that are gonna come up, so. Thank you, Brad. So are there any final questions or comments? I kinda feel like we've asked the big questions, and we're hearing good details.
Yeah. Rebecca? Um, so to get back to face coverings for a moment, not to say that we should even consider a rule, but we should at least think about clarifying our own thoughts perhaps. Right before our last board meeting, some research had come out to show that buffs, in fact, are worse than nothing at all, that there's breaking droplets into smaller, things that aerosolize more easily. So I, we should at least consider to think about, are buffs okay? What are, are we, what are we gonna think about, you know, a buff instead of a mask? And I know, as I said, it might not be all the way up to a policy level, but it's at least something everyone should be considering.
Yeah, and I think one of the challenges with that, Rebecca, is, I know at least one person in our audience who's wearing a buff that is multi-layered, and that they are sewing themselves, and I don't know how to go around and check and make sure that, and I don't know how our administrators would do that either. You know, it's a really hard one. I think, similar to what was said earlier, that we're really, and I think it was Ursula, that we're really trying to educate and, and encourage, and we're gonna have face masks disposable and cloth that have been supplied. And so I, I don't know, I, it's a, it's a really hard one to, to figure out what exactly, like, what is that narrow, narrow definition of what is acceptable and what is not? And I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but.
Yeah, totally, no. I actually sewed multi-layers into our buffs when that research came out, but yeah, I was just saying it's something that everyone might not know, 'cause it's so recent, and it's, yeah, it's just, yeah, something to think about.
Thank you, Rebecca. So any final questions or comments? I would make a final comment, if that's okay. If there's no other questions. So as we went around and presented to our schools yesterday and today, we had, you know, we talked about the fact that we didn't have our big opening staff meeting, and, and that was a change for us. I was really looking forward to the Mardi Gras theme this year. Slight deviation from the jungle theme. And, you know, and one of the things that, that Mark would do, or, or other superintendents would do, is talk about, you know, where we're headed, what's our vision, what's the expectation? And I communicated to everybody that, that my expectation this year is that we do our best. And I think listening to our building administrators talk tonight, and Bill and Callie, we are doing more than our best at this point. And I know in the creativity with our teachers and, and finding solutions to problems, I am not worried about where we're headed as a district. And, you know, listening to our other schools in the valley and our double-A counterparts, we are in a really, really fortunate situation in, in our, in our district. And that is to commend our administrative team, our, our teachers, our families, our board. I mean, what an amazing, an amazing place. And so we will do our best in, in trying to resolve this. Callie talked a little bit today about, you know, there are questions, and maybe we don't have answers, but we do have a plan, and we have a contingency for just about everything that we can imagine. And there's probably gonna be something that comes up that we are not, wasn't on my radar, and the ball tubs was not on my radar. The QR code, I mean, brilliant, I didn't, I can't believe I didn't think of that. You know, so, so those kind of things. I'm, I'm listening, and I'm just like completely amazed and in awe at the challenge that we have presented ourselves with, and how our district has risen to the occasion. And, and very grateful and proud, and, you know, like, people say to me all the time, like, oh, I can't believe you took this job, and what were you thinking? And I told, I told everybody, I said, I love my job, and, and it's a, and it's wonderful, and it's challenging, but I'm truly enjoying it, and it is due in large part to the people that I get to work with, so. And I'd just say thank you all for being such inspirational educators. Your credit to our community, our school district, credit to the community. When big challenges come up, you know, you give it to the people that are smart and are dedicated, and you fit that bill, so thank you. So it's entertaining, motion to adjourn.
I still hold.
Second. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.
Aye.